Welcome. To the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this evening, April the 22nd. I apologize for being a minute late, but we will continue right on. I believe we have a quorum, so I'll call us to order and ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Kevin Cottle.
We can do that. Father of all, once again, we thank you for allowing us to gather here in complete freedom. That's our right and privilege. Not everyone has, and please don't let us take that for granted. Thank you for those who are fighting the battles for us, both overseas and first responders here locally. Tonight, we would ask that you guide us to make decisions that are pleasing to you and that we conduct ourselves in a way that is also pleasing to you. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Now, I'm going to ask everyone that is in a blue John W. Bates t-shirt.
Go Bulldogs!
To come up front here, and I want all of you, don't rush all at once now. Come on up. Want everybody to stand up here, and you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You've got to come up here anyway, boys and girls, so may as well do it now.
Save your time.
All right. Right there's the flag. You start us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fantastic. Don't go anywhere. Stay right there. Yes, turn around and let everybody see your pretty face. Who's got the, I believe you do. So, if you don't mind, Commissioner, I'd like to...
Do it first?
Do that right now while they're up, and we'll get to hear the public in just a minute.
Okay. Proclamation honoring John W. Bates Middle School Academic Team Champions 2019. Whereas the John W. Bates Middle School Academic Team had an outstanding year representing Danville schools in the community, the city commission would like to congratulate them on their many accomplishments. And whereas John W. Bates Middle School Academic Team competed against 16 other middle school academic teams in the region, in the Region 16 Competition in March 2019, and whereas John W. Bates Middle School Academic Team won the 2019 Region 16 Championship, finishing 16 points higher than the second place team. Wow. Whereas the John W. Bates Middle School Academic Team went on to compete at the Governor's Cup in March at the God House and made it to the Sweet 16, Sweet 16 and Team Competition, finishing seventh out of 300 schools that were represented, and was the only middle school in Kentucky that earned two state championships at the competition. Hmm. Now, I'm going to blow these names up, but, and whereas Kara was named state champion in Arts and Humanities and 20th in Social Studies, and Ramona was named state champion in Language Arts and placed fifth in the state in Arts and Humanities. Made Ms. Dewey proud of both 50, right? Whereas team members including, oh, man, Grace, Ben, Jason, Sophie, Henry, Evan, Carson, Elena, Ilana, Kiara, Ramona, Hank, Paul, thanks Sam, and Kendra Williams, along with Coach Carney, are outstanding role models to the youth of Danville and Bull County. All of the members are applauded for their exemplary attitude and contributions to education. And whereas John W. Bates Middle School Academic Team members are, wait a minute now, are shining examples of focus and dedication to be the best they can be as a team, coming together to accomplish great things, they are to be commended. Wow. Now, therefore, Mayor Perez and the city commissioners of the city of Danville, on this 22nd day of April 2019, do hereby congratulate John W. Bates Academic Team on their outstanding accomplishments and encourage the citizens of Danville to congratulate them on their success and representation of Danville, Kentucky.
Wow. Excellent. 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 Of equal, if not greater, praise is to the coach, who leads this bunch. Coach, if you don't mind, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you, and if you'll introduce each of these fine young people to us.
All right. Here on the end, we have Mr. Jackson Irwin, and we have Kendra Williams, and we have Ben Tibbles. Always calling by his brother's name. And then we've got Ramona Pierce, and Hank Helmers, and Sophie, and Grace Haynes, and Evan Sanders, and Carson Wasdell. And we have several, unfortunately, they're playing soccer, small district, our kids kind of do everything.
Gotcha. All right. Quiz time. Favorite subject?
Math.
Science.
Language arts.
Language arts.
Math.
Language arts.
Science.
Science.
History.
No recess, no playground, no nothing. Gee, my knees. Congratulations, team. Fantastic. You represent us well. We have some pins that we would like to give each of you. They are representatives of the key to the city. And Coach, thank you. Now, parents, parents, stand up. We want to see parents. There you go. There you go. Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, you're going to...
Hey, Coach Carney, how long have you been doing this? 147 years or...
That's right. This finishes 25.
25. That's great. That is great.
Okay. All right, good. I'll take those.
Yeah.
So, just to let you know, this team is actually competing over Mother's Day in Chicago for a national championship, and we're invited to two national tournaments, and they're also competing in June for a second national. They qualified for two. And we're one of a few teams in Kentucky Middle School that actually have won a national championship. There's not too many teams in the state that can say that.
That's right. Yes, say it.
Anyone that'd like to donate to us, we'd be happy to take any donations.
So, when you're in Chicago, will they have an opportunity to go see any of the sites? And if so, what are you planning?
Well, they usually vote. We make a little list, but we, last year, we actually, went last year as well, and we finished in the quarterfinals of Nationals last year. And we went to the Science Museum and Industry, the Art Museum, where else, Ramona?
Downtown Hollywood.
Under the Bean, the cloud, falling cloud, probably what is that called? So, we try to see as much as we can.
To the Shad?
No, it's always, the Shad Aquarium's always, so it's smaller, you can't get in there as quick. But we kind of, we'll probably do, I don't know, they vote every year what we're going to do. Yeah. So, the Chicago, all those strings, they make a decision. We don't have so many days, and we try to vote, but over the years, I've got to see them all, based on their votes.
Excellent. I know you all have fun. Thank you for joining us tonight, and we've got extra pins if you need it. How about another round of applause? Now, back to homework.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for what you do.
What homework, right?
Now, if you'll allow me to back up to the approval of the agenda, I assume that meets everyone's approval. We'll move right on to hear the public. This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the microphone on any subject that is on tonight's agenda. Do I have any takers? Seeing none, we'll move right on to item two, which is the Historic Preservation Month.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you do need to vote on the last proclamation as well.
Oh, sorry. Yes, we may.
I will move that we accept the proclamation into the record.
Thank you, sir. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Boatright, come join us. Ah, Mr. Hun with us. Got to have you. You guard, aren't you? These two fine folks are with the Boyle Landmark Trust. Pat is the recently chosen president. Mr. Hun, do you have an office title?
No.
No, we'll, Hun, we'll give you one. We'll give you one. Whereas the preservation of Kentucky's historic buildings and sites is a proven economic development tool that creates jobs, attracts investment, revitalizes downtowns and neighborhoods, stimulates heritage tourism, fosters new business development, assists affordable housing, increases property values, and improves the economic climate of communities, and whereas the preservation has been established as public policy under the National Historic Preservation Act, which provided the framework for the Kentucky Legislature to create the State Historic Preservation Office in late 1966, and amendments to the Act in 1980 enabled successful partnerships between federal, state, and local governments. And whereas the Kentucky Heritage Council and State Historic Preservation Office is responsible for the identification, protection, and preservation of archaeological sites and historic and cultural resources throughout the Commonwealth, in partnership with elected officials, community leaders, advocates, nonprofit organizations, and interested citizens, and whereas the city of Danville and the heart of Danville have been a certified local government for many years in partnership with the Kentucky Heritage Council and the National Park Service, and has established historic preservation as a public policy, and worked to meet federal, state, and historic preservation objectives. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and because of the wealth of Kentucky's historic buildings, sites, structures, and places, it is important that citizens of the Commonwealth recognize and value this heritage. Now, therefore, I, Mayor G. Michael Perez, and the Board of Commissions of the City of Danville, do hereby proclaim May 19th, excuse me, May 2019 as Historic Preservation Month. Thank you, ma'am. You want to share some words about what the Boyle Landmark Trust does?
I think that you've talked about it all. Thank you, ma'am.
You preserve antiques like Mr. Hun? Is that pretty much what you do?
Oh, no. No, no.
They ain't, they ain't did it yet, but they're working on it.
Good luck. Good luck with that.
Kevin, thanks for that payback.
Yeah.
I move we accept the proclamation soon.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item three is the proclamation for Equal Pay Day. Commissioner Cottle?
Yes, sir. Whereas, over 40 years after passage of the Equal Pay Act and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of inequitable pay differentials. And whereas, according to statistics released by the U.S. Census Bureau, U.S. Department of Labor, and American Association of University Women, full-time working women earn only 79% of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equality. And whereas, according to analysis of data provided by the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics, women earn less in every occupational classification for which enough data is available, including occupations dominated by women, including cashiers, retail sales, registered nurses, and teachers. And whereas, fields in management and higher education also produce similar results after adjusting for rank, age, credentials, field of study, and other factors. And whereas, over working lifetime, this wage disparity caused the average American woman and her family $700,000 to $2 million in lost wages, impacting social security benefits and pensions. And whereas, fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue cost or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas, Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, symbolized the time in the new year in which the wages paid to American women catch up with the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Perez and the city commissioners of the city of Danville, on this 22nd day of April 2019, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, as Equal Pay Day, and hereby urge the citizens of this city to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly.
Very good. Do I hear a motion to accept the proclamation, and is there anyone here that would like to accept it?
I move to accept the Equal Pay Act proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Denise is going to say something.
You going to say something, Denise? You get the same amount of pay as everybody else, so...
I have equal pay. I do.
I might apologize for the city that we're doing this proclamation 20 days after the day.
Better, better late than never.
Give that to Mr. Terry if you want.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item four is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting from two weeks ago. Chair will entertain a motion to accept or amend.
I move to accept the minutes of Monday, April 8th, 2019, as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Thanks, sir. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. Item five is the reappointment of the Sister Cities Board members. You have that in your packet, and I would like to recommend that Jane Boyd, Jane Dewey, Norma Gail Lewis, and Milton Regelman be reappointed to the Sister Cities Commission. And I would like to have a motion to that effect, please.
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion?
I guess Nick Wade's spot will be taken by whoever becomes the, or is it not tied to the heart?
I don't think it's tied to the heart. I don't believe it is. I think it was just an interest of his.
So, we'll need to fill that one as well?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, do I hear a motion to, for that, those reappointments?
Like we already did that.
We do that? All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item six is the reappointment of the Danville Architectural Heritage Board, being Mr. Ty, Tom Ty, Melody Franklin Quinn, and Vaughn Frye.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion?
I'm going to guess, go out on a limb, and say there wasn't a long line of people that wanted to agree to take that whipping. Is that, I appreciate what they do and the fact that they do sometimes take a whipping.
Agreed.
Thanks to them.
No further comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item eight is Resolution Number 2019 dash 04 dash 22...
Number 70.
Oh, you skipped the Ethics Board.
Oh, I did, didn't I? I'm sorry. Doggone, y'all caught me on that one. The attached list of Ethics Board members being, oh, reappointment of James Hun, Arnetta Myers, Bill Carter, and I want to add one more to you all, and that is David Blackburn, who is retired hospital administrator, lived in Danville for about eight years, member of the Rotary Club.
He would be coming on as an alternate?
No, he would come on as a, there's a vacancy in here.
Yeah, I thought, we asked Mr. Scott...
And Amy Mo does not wish to be reappointed. Yes, sir? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I thought we'd asked Mr. Scott to do some work for us at the last meeting, and I'm sure some of these folks who are current alternates have agreed to step up to be regulars on the...
Yes, sir. I did contact all current members of the board. All current members wish to be reappointed, and the two alternates wish to be considered for a full-time appointment to the board, and serve as alternates in a prior term.
But, and in doing so, I, we still have two, if they move that, if they move that up, we would then need...
We have two alternate positions. And I have another name that I did not get in until today.
Shame on you.
If someone's willing to serve, that name is Sarah Berry.
Okay. Yeah.
Sarah Berry? That's nice.
Now, let me make sure I understand this, Ms. Scott. We've got...
Two vacancies.
Yeah. I understand.
But the two alternates wish to be moved up?
That's correct.
That was their request to the commission.
And so then, we can replace the two alternates.
Right. Would you like to make that motion?
I will make the motion that I just...
Of what you just said?
Do I need to do it in an official way, Mr. Dexter?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the motion is, so I think it'd be good to...
Good. Vote on it, when he's...
Okay, well, we'll make that motion. I will move that we appoint the two current alternates on the Ethics Board to the vacancy positions that we have. And our alternate suggestions are David Blackburn and Sarah Berry.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion?
Thank you to everyone for serving.
And thanks to Mr. Scott for contacting those folks, because we had the volunteer lunch, and they walked in, and he'd already talked to them, so that was like the next day or two days after that, so that was great.
And while we're on the ethics subject, I don't, I can't remember if we discussed this last time or not, about becoming a certified city of ethics with the Kentucky League of Cities.
I don't think we specifically discussed it. You might outline that for the commission and the public.
That's a certification and training that the KLC offers for cities. It's for the, it would be for us commissioners and for the public as well, and for our citizens that serve on that Ethics Board, and it's just another layer, I feel, of training and knowledge that we can give to our people and to us and our staff. So, I have been interested in pursuing that, if anyone else is.
It would train Kevin and I on things to do that will prevent us from going before the Ethics Board, right?
All the stuff we do all the time, yeah.
Yeah. Like taking restroom breaks at the same time.
Commissioner Terry, I recall the cost to do that from prior year discussions is very modest to do. I think it would affirm the city commission's intent to be an ethical city, and I support that idea.
Yes, yes.
So, we have a...
Is that a friendly amendment to the motion?
You want to make that a friendly amendment, sir?
I can, I can make that a friendly amendment to my motion.
To your own motion, sir.
To preserve, to pursue the ethics training from Kentucky League of Cities.
We have a amended motion and a second.
Second.
Discussion further?
Discussion. I'll back up. Commissioner Terry, we were at the same meeting, and it's kind of like another badge of honor for our city, like being Main Street Kentucky and so forth. So, I think it says to anybody coming in that we are concerned about ethics, and that's representative, I believe, in some of our committees, Citizens for Concern for Human Relations and so forth and so on, but let's put that merit badge on it.
Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding us of that.
Thank you.
Item eight is the Resolution 2019 dash 04 dash 22 dash 01. This is the health insurance renewal. Ms. Peak, you want to share some information?
You all have a memo and a resolution, and actually, the memo, if you've read it, which you have read it, I'm sure we would ask this, it gave an overview of our current insurance plan. Last year, we went to a self-funded program versus the fully insured plan, and Baptist was going out of business. And in 2017, we were with Baptist Health, and we had a total out-of-pocket expense of around $2 million. We went to self-fund it in 2018, and we expected to spend about $1,006,000, and then with a few, some changes in the upcoming plan, we expect to spend about $1,008,000, or $1,009,000, which is over $100,000 in savings, really, since back to 2017. We're still under that number. It's been a good experience, I believe, moving, we moved to Cheryl Morgan as our consultant with the insurance benefit. We are with a Medbin, who's our third-party administrator, that helps pay the claims or pays the claims. And we're with Cigna, the Cigna Network, and we have been for a year. It was a learning curve. Things were a little different, but I think it's been a good year, and I think we're moving in the right direction. So, we are going to make some recommended changes in the upcoming plan and be able to keep what we have, which is a huge benefit to our employees. And those are noted, some changes on there, which are big, that the employees will hear about later, are over-the-counter drugs that are on the plan now that cost individuals a copay, that you'll be able to get over the counter for free, which there'll be a list of those. And that will help our plan, the generic, if you'll do a generic drug instead of a preferred, if there's one available, those copays will go down to $5 for the prescription, and that's a big, that's a good change. Or $10 for a 90-day supply, which is a really good change. We are increasing the out-of-pocket maximum. It's still lower than other people. Ours was 2,500. It'll go up to 3,000. It was 2,500, 5,000, it'll go to 3,600 next year. I think we have a really strong plan, and then we were also implementing a wellness plan for this upcoming year, that people, that employees and their families can, will take advantage of some preventative care that costs them nothing, but it'll help our plan if they'll get those things done, and there'll be incentives for that. Our plan runs through April 30th, so we would like to, you know, it'll start up May 1st, and then, so we've had the recommendation come forth, we've analyzed it, we've looked at data with Cheryl Morgan, we've met with them. We would like to recommend that after, you know, analysis with the data you have in front of you, and quarterly meetings with Cheryl Morgan, which has been a very good thing, they come down at any time that we want to meet with them, their utilization reports are very detailed, and hopefully they'll become more detailed as we're further into the plan, because they only had not a full year of planned data, because we went from Baptist Health last year to this plan, because Baptist Health was going out of business. So, we would like to stay with Cheryl Morgan as our consultant. We would like to stay with U.S. Fire as our stop-loss carrier underwriter, Medbin as our third-party administrator, and Cigna as the network, with an increase of overall of 4.8% in the overall budget of the plan for the upcoming year.
Well, I'll move to approve Resolution 2019 04 22 dash 01, based on the information that was presented in writing, and also based on your comments here just recently, and the other comment, I remember if I read this correct, is that this plan is still less than the 2017 expenses for health insurance.
Yes.
Wow.
By moving to self-funded, you know?
Yeah.
It's saved money.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. One is, there was a local vendor who tried, I think, wanted to be our administrator for our self-funded program, and we didn't feel the timing was right, because we were just getting started with it. Is that, did, have they made any, have they contacted us this year or anything?
I haven't heard from them, no.
Okay. And the other thing was, I was trying to determine, just for the general knowledge, how much a family plan costs the city to provide?
A family plan, about $19,000 a year. And our rates for a family plan are still under the Kentucky League of Cities plan, about 11%. about 11% for a family plan, theirs is about $1,700, so it's per month. So, ours is less than theirs, and a lot of cities that I've talked to recently about health insurance and other things, their plans for family are higher, their deductibles are higher, a lot of their deductibles and out-of-pockets are higher than ours. So, I think our plan is a little richer, and yet we still have the cost, we're containing the cost, and they're still less than others.
Yeah, that's the reason I brought it up, is because I think when we talk about the benefits package that we offer, that's a, that's a big deal. It's a good plan, and, well, nobody has to pay for it, except the, us, city, but, so I, I think sometimes that gets lost when we're talking about benefits and salaries and things. Thank you.
So, do I hear a motion that we accept the resolution as presented?
We don't do that.
Did we do that?
Do we have a second?
We don't have a second.
I'll second it.
Now, we have a second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is Resolution 2019-04-22-02. This is the agreement with the American Red Cross. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, this resolution would represent the agreement of the city to allow the American Red Cross to use our Bunny Davis Recreation Center in the event of a disaster, for people to utilize as temporary refuge. It provides for some reimbursement of cost if facilities are damaged, or for reimbursement of actual expenses that might occur in that period of time. It would give our community an additional defined shelter, and it has been requested by the American Red Cross that we do so.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to accept Resolution Number 2019-04-22-02.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Just for information, Mr. Scott, I think that this is not the only shelter that would be utilized, is that correct?
That's certainly correct. I mean, through our joint partnership with Boyle County in terms of the emergency management services, there are a number of other shelters that are defined in our local plan. Those include, I think primarily, schools and churches as, as other, but this would just be in addition to that.
It's good to know we're planning ahead, you, because you never know.
That's right.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, chair calls a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is the City Manager Report. Mr. Scott, should you have one?
Very, very briefly, I would just remind the City Commission and the public that we do have a special call meeting scheduled for this Thursday, April 25th, at 5:30 p.m. here at City Hall. At that time, I will present the recommended preliminary budget for the next fiscal year, respond to any questions, should the commission have any at that time. Our effort to produce a preliminary budget is to gain understanding among the commission and the public as to our ability to fund programs in the future and define what those may be, and so this is our first cut at that. We are finalizing and kind of rounding the corner on that preliminary budget, and that's kind of consumed us this last few days or, or week or two in terms of doing, so that's really the primary focus of the financial staff and myself. We've got a lot, a lot of other projects underway that you can see throughout the city, code enforcement, you know, improvements to Main Street here, the sidewalks and various other things, but with regard to our special call meeting, I think that's the only agenda item we have, and that is the preliminary budget.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Thank you. Move right into commissioner comments.
Do you hear the public?
Oh, we do have that. Hear the public. Anybody want to take three minutes on any subject that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into commissioner comments, if there are any.
I'd remind everybody that this is the week that we're celebrating Earth Day. We've done a lot as a city to, well, not alone, certainly, a lot of the citizens here to plant trees and beautification. Committee does a lot of things, but that Earth Day celebration will happen Saturday at BCTC, right next door to The Taste of Danville at Wilderness Trail Distillery, so a lot of things going on on the west side of town or northwest, sometimes I get goofed up.
They're both in honor of Earth Day?
Pardon me?
No. Just kidding.
I want to commend the city staff on a very nice volunteer luncheon.
Yes.
Very well attended. That is, that is an impressive day, to see, how many did we have there?
I think our total membership of volunteers is 100 or slightly beyond. We probably had 60 or 70 there that day, I think, maybe 75.
At least. And those are the folks that make it happen, so, those of you that were in attendance, thank you very much for, for doing so. Anything else?
I thought it was a nice article in the paper about neat things you done. I had his wife donate the trees, donate the trees to the school system, and I, I was reading a newspaper article, and my phone sort of started vibrating, and it was Bo Weston, our tree man. So, Bo said, "I guess I know you got some contacts for Nate, then you send it to me, I'm going to contact him about some trees for the city." So, I said, now, Bo wanted to thank him for that contribution, but Bo was right on top of it. Really neat, really neat article.
Anything else?
It's prom season.
Are you going? Yeah, you got a date, going?
Be careful out there this weekend, no.
Have you got your dress picked out?
No, I was, I was going to go disguise as the chief of police so I could do some law and order at the prom, they, they turned me down, though. I wanted to go to, I wanted to go to Woodford County High School's prom this past weekend. It was in the castle.
Oh, interesting.
They invited me again, though, that's mad.
Item 11 is the payment of the bills, and the chair will accept a motion to approve or amend the payment as presented.
Move to approve the bill list, April 22nd, $213,293.48.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 12 is Resolution 2019-04-22-03. This is the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority Loan Application Approval. Michelle, if you feel like speaking, do so, please.
This resolution is not the application, it is actually the acceptance of the loan. They've, we've, you already accepted the application, and they accepted that, and this is actually to get the loan. The loan amount on this resolution is incorrect, it needs to state $4,918,257. There is a typo there.
I should change it to four.
So, it's an extra $2 million on there. This resolution is for to finish up the Pervail Road Corporate Drive project and the standpipe in Periville to increase the, the amount of water that it is available and that, that's much needed in that area and going out that area. This was the next project on the agenda. We've got federal funding for part of the, the project before, and this is just to finish out that project. We're going to get a 2% plus a .25% origination fee, which is better than what we could get if we had done regular bonding for it.
For the sake of discussion, I'll move to accept Resolution Number 2019-04-22-03.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. This is kind of a big deal. As I recall, because they said, hey, if you need an extra two to, to finish this further, Earl, you got any comments about it?
No, unless you all have a question.
Okay.
The, the, this component, recall, we've done a map before that showed multiple phases for the Periville Road improvements. This component of the financing pays for the final leg, which is the water tower component and a pump station. You'll have very minor water line work with this phase. We do, we, we do hope to, to, that the project will not, we, we hope that the project will come in much less than the loan amount, so that then the commission can make other decisions with that remaining funds as time passes. We, we hope, that's all.
This really helps us execute the expansion of the water system, though.
It completes really, as far as we can identify, the bulk of the improvements that's necessary throughout the county, as far as we can tell today.
Excellent.
Where are we in that project, the, the current Periville Road expansion?
We have gotten estimates for the phase, what we call Periville Road Phase Two, and we've gotten estimates for the Corporate Drive Phase Two. We'll be looking towards analyzing those and maybe presenting those early in May for your review.
Any further questions or comments?
Sure. So, it's a big chunk of money, and it's moving us forward, but I think there's a couple things in here that, that you may want to highlight, because I did, and that was the debt per customer will go down as a result of this project. And the other fact, I think, is that not only are we doing some good for Western Boyle County, putting that water tank in Periville, but we sell water to quite a few of our surrounding communities, so in some regards, this is kind of a business move as well.
It, it, it can be perceived that way. The city has emergency connections to North Mercer Water District on 68 out of Periville. We want to add additional connections to the Parks Water District on the south side of US 150 headed to Periville, and also then we have an emergency connection to Washington County, the city of Springfield. This will enable us to enhance that relationship over the course of time and, and be in a position to make water available for them in the future if they so choose to take advantage of that.
Directly ties into economic development, too, with where it's going, what it's going to be doing out there, so.
Very good.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 13 is Resolution 2019-04-22-04. This is a disclosure with regard to vendors. Mr. Coffee, continue, please.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Staff obtained quotes for some renovation work, painting primarily over on the police department side of the property. The contract is required three quotes, the city got those. The low quote that the city received was from Lowry Restoration, and we'd like to note, as required by policy, that we were disclosing that the father-in-law of a finance department employee is the owner of that company, and the spouse of the employee works for the company.
But it was the low bid?
It was, yes, the low bid.
Okay. And, and all, all specs were met?
That is correct.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution 2019-04-22-04.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion?
Mr. Dexter, is this okay?
The purpose of the resolution is to make it okay.
With that comment, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 14 is Resolution 2019-04-22-05. This is a change order number one for the streetscape. Mr. Coffee?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Change order number one on the streetscape, as you can see, is ongoing across the street. On the south side of the road, there's a, a couple of what we call drop box inlets, curb inlets, where stormwater enters into the storm system. Originally, the, the thought was to save those. When we got into them, one of them is, is in front of Speedway, the other's across the road at Church Street here. Those inlets are not in really condition to save, you're better off to go ahead and replace them. Staff feels like, and we have arranged for, if the commission wants to do so, to go ahead and do that while the, the contract is underway. The item one is the Church Street Drop Inlet for $3,600. The other one is the Speedway Curb Box, which is $4,000 to replace that, that entrance. The next one is on the Fifth Street end of the project. The project ended abruptly at the sidewalk termination where, where the new sidewalk was poured, and, and at the request of John and, and staff, they want to extend that and tie that in a little bit more neatly around that return, so that the entirety of that curb return is replaced, rather than concrete up to the sidewalk and then take off. It, it ties it all the way into the Fifth Street straight section of curb, and it adds $3,200 if you choose to do that, and staff certainly recommends that, as we feel like it will create a little neater, neater job at that end. The next one is an existing manhole frame that is too high. It is located on the north side of Main Street in front of Center's empty lot. If you're riding down through there on a dirt bike, like I do sometimes, you can just about willy across it, and it's, it's that, that bump that you hit where the storm drain crosses the road, I, I know everyone in town has commented to me at some point in the past about it. It was, it was left too high during the City Hall construction project, and the amount of $2,200 allows this contractor to adjust that back to what we'd consider normal grade.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution 2019-04-22-05.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion?
Yeah, again, I'm going to plead some ignorance here. I like everything in the plan, but if the manhole cover is high and we repaved the street after you lower it, does that change anything?
No, the, the manhole is too high.
It's just too high, okay.
And the street, when, when Main Street is resurfaced, it will, will be milled, so the pavement will be removed at least an inch and a half down through there, so it will actually be, unless adjusted, it could be made worse, possibly.
I know it doesn't make sense to do all the work we're doing and have these little things sticking out there, so.
No more further questions? Call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 15 is Resolution 2019-04-22-06. This is a TAP grant application approval. Mr. Coffee, continue, please.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is a, a resubmital of the previous application we made for streetscape improvements from Fourth Street down to Second Street along Main Street. It would include electrical work and also the replacement of the sidewalks, curb, gutter. The estimate has been updated, fairly short turnaround on this, so the new application is not filled out yet. What we have for you for what we will replace, or what we will populate the new application with, is the old application that is, is after page eight, you'll see in red across the top, old application. That's what we intend to replace and refill the blanks in the new application with, is the text in that. We might clean it up a little bit, but that's the intent. The new estimate for the work is $1,305,330. We have that estimate, if you'd like to talk about it, we'd be happy to.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll offer a motion to approve, 2019-04-22-06.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. This will be, what, our third time to submit this?
Yes, sir.
What do we have to do to, you said that, I didn't, what do we have to do to get DOT to understand the significance of this?
Well, I think their staff knows. I think funding's been very competitive across the state. I, I'm not aware of, of necessarily, there's been some awards of streetscapes over the last couple of cycles, there's not been an abundance of individual projects, per se. There's been a few select projects. I think ours is a competitive project for those folks, and I think, but there is also, I think it's a competitive industry for these, these grants, it's an 80/20 grant. I think a big piece that we are doing is completing the projects currently underway out, out behind us, and I think that will, will help us be more, be in a position to, that they'll look more favorably on us, I, I think. Outside of that, I think we'll go through the application again and, and seek some areas where maybe we can improve, improve the text or improve the presentation of the text and, see what that does for us.
Mayor, I also recall reading, and, and Earl, you may as well, that the announcement of this grant availability also communicated the fact that primarily these grants were intended for smaller grants. They did allow resubmission... They did allow resubmission of the larger grants, but that seemingly is not the number one goal in providing these grant awards, to fund a single large project versus funding a multitude of smaller projects. So that is also a bit of a challenge as we resubmit.
Once we get this finished, and I'm going to assume we are, will that, does that get us from Second Street all the way down, then, or what?
It would, as a matter of fact, yes, along Main Street. The city, what we've talked about with Ron recently, which I'm sure you all will hear it as we go through the budget presentations, is how do you consider Fourth Street, I think, and then you have a small piece of Third Street on the south side of Main, down to the parking garage from the intersection of Main. I think you've got two or three smaller pieces, but once you get past this Main Street, then it's much smaller by, so it would be smaller projects at a time, and it would just be different in nature. This will be a big project that you do, and also, the Fourth Street will also be a big project when you do it. Because of the power cost. We met with KU last week. The cost of the material tied to the electrical work has really gone up, and so their costs would be much more significant on Fourth Street than it was five years ago, obviously.
This needs to occur this time. It's ironic that the two most heavily traveled blocks are the ones that haven't been done yet, and we've got electrical issues under there, and that needs to be resolved, and this would get that done. This would get that done. So anything we can do to boost that would be very helpful. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Chair, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 16 is Resolution 2019-04-22-07. This is a bid award for a skid steer.
This is for me? They're getting this for me?
For you to play with, yes. That's right.
Appreciate it, guy.
I don't know who wants to address that.
You, the skid steer, do you want to do that? Go ahead. The mic's on up there.
Just let me drive it sometime.
Already got his voice.
Okay. What you need to know about it, it's any questions about the machine itself, what we need it for?
You might give us just a summary, just for the record.
Okay. It's what we're doing, we're updating. We still want to keep our old machine. It's kind of an update to it. Our old machine's like, I think, about a '95 or '96 model, which puts about 25 years old. This one is going to have tracks on it, which will enable it to do more yard work consistently and better with less damage. We'll use it in our cemeteries. It will be good for street work as well. It will allow us to rent different attachments for like milling and doing some drainage work on the streets. It will help us get into our retention beds as they dry, to clean them out. It is on a state contract bid, reason why we didn't have more quotes on here. We consider the Bobcat to be probably one of the top-of-the-line bins, they're kind of one of the inventors that everybody talks about a skid steer. They call all brands Bobcats, so. It will have heat and air in the cab for year-round usage, a little better on the employee. And it will be used in our tree planting with the auger, which we just purchased here. We've been renting an auger this past time, and this time, we'll have our own auger instead of renting, so.
Appreciate the summary.
So you've gotten about 24 years out of the old one?
Yes, sir. And we're still using it. We're not putting it out to pasture totally, but for small jobs and stuff, we still use it. This one, the newer ones, have a different type lift on the bucket that don't endanger the operator as much. Instead of coming back on you, it actually does more of a vertical lift and can load a taller truck. And like I say, with the tracks, it's just going to be so much more versatile than a rubber tire loader would be. Not that we're going to ditch the other one, but we're just adding to the fleet just a little bit.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
You got it.
I move for approval of 2019-04-22-07.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second, on me.
Discussion?
Not any discussion, just a point. Go ahead. Did that beat you this time?
No, I just was making a comment, that Cottle wants a ride.
Ride it in the parade.
My comment is that this was a budgeted item, for those who are wondering if we're just buying a bunch of toys, but we've already thought about this, is that correct?
Yes, it was in the budget to be done.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, all.
Let Kevin know when you get it.
Yep, when we get it, he's welcome to come drive.
Item 18 is the second reading of ordinance number 1927, which is the intent to annex US 150 in the Wilderness Road area.
Thank you, Mayor. As this is a second reading, I'll read it into the record, and it is ordinance number 1927, which is an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky pursuant to KRS 81A.420, establishing its intent to annex the unincorporated territory lying adjacent to and contiguous with the present city boundaries, located on and along the south Danville bypass, US 150 and Wilderness Road, and the area between same, which property is owned by Evelyn S. Gonder, Walter Gonder, Jeffrey L. L. Kettles, Emma Jean Walker, Kimberly Anderson, Louis C. Brown, Eugenia Lynn Hopkins, Temple Baptist Church, Codwell Stone Company, and Commonwealth of Kentucky, consisting in whole of 180.879 acres, more or less, and being more accurately described below. Again, this is the second reading of ordinance number 1927. To jog your memories, you passed an intent, the first reading of the intent to annex ordinance back on March 25th. The ordinance, since it is not a consensual ordinance, annexation, rather, which means that all of the property owners did not come to the city and request to be annexed, there were a majority of landowners, but you have to have specific signatures on documents that were not obtained, and that wasn't necessarily because there were objections, it's simply they weren't obtained. So you passed the first reading of the ordinance in March, and under this statute, it's a little different than we typically do. It requires a notification be sent by the city clerk to all of the landowners within the proposed area to annex, that gives them a specific timeframe to know when the second reading is. Those letters were sent, and actually, they were given more than the statutorily required time and notice of tonight's meeting. Upon your approval of this document tonight, it will be published along with a second publication of basically a notice of rights to those individuals, which states that they have a right to petition the clerk to make it appear on a ballot, and it could be voted upon at the next general election, if enough signatures were obtained. So what you're doing tonight is a first step. You've had the intent to annex, which then in turn gives rights to the property owners to, for 60 days, to present a petition for it to be a referendum item, essentially. If no petition is received, then you proceed to annex it at that time. Okay? So we will be in a bit of a holding pattern after tonight's second reading until some required publications occur and the 60 days pass. Before you vote, the statute does require a certification by the city clerk that the mailings were sent to all of the property owners within the area, so if I can, I'm going to first swear in the city clerk under oath and then get her certification. So Ms. Rader, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And Ms. Rader, in compliance with the statute, did you prepare and send a letter to all of the landowners within the proposed area to annex?
I did.
And how did you send those letters?
Certified restricted delivery.
And were they given proper notice of tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. So that completes our certification. Thank you. And with that being done, we've fulfilled our statutory obligations, and you are free to have first and second and vote if you so choose, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Leave a roll call vote, is?
I have a quick question. Who initiated, did we initiate this as a city, or did one of them?
There were several landowners that did that have contacted the city manager. If you look at the map, I can identify them more by location than I can by name, so. For instance, at the intersection of the bypass and, it's identified on this plate as Wilderness Road, you have the Faith Temple Baptist Church. That was, that had been requested, actually, some years ago, and I think that's the first one that started. And basically, what this does is gets everything north of the bypass into the city, and you'll see there along, it starts with the Gonder property and then continues on. Quellstone was in favor of it as well. But as I remember, you had the first two property owners that actually requested it were Faith Temple Baptist Church, so they'd be the southernmost two properties, and then the neighbor immediately to the west.
I was just curious, I didn't.
It's an interesting little triangle.
Sitting there just saying, let's go annex this.
Right. Typically, the annexations begin by one or two landowners, and then, when the city staff looks at the boundary, you want to make sure that your municipal limit, you'd like for it to be, have some sense of shape and not create pockets of unann, or just unincorporated areas that really touch every other incorporated area. So if you see here, this is generally in a triangular shape that will complete a nice shape for the city boundary.
Roll call, please.
I had one more question. Just to try to give a little bit of orientation here on where we are, this is on the bypass, where sort of the old road comes out into that weird pull-off if you're turning left.
I think the easiest way to describe it is if you just leave town on Stanford Road, you pass BAY, you go through the stoplight, and after you pass Quellstone, you go across the bridge. This is the area that on your right would appear on the southern part of this map, no, excuse me, on the, yes, on the southern part of the map, and continue on to that weird little intersection there, if you need to go left, go to Stanford, or right to come back to town.
Two things are really benefit, if I may, Stephen, on the matter. The city has a pump station on the extreme right end, wastewater pump station on the right end of the drawing. It puts that pump station inside of the city limits. Also, most importantly, it cleans up both Stanford Road and this intersection for emergency services, so that everything west of the bridge, which is your perpendicular line across Stanford, the 150, the four lane, is, everything to the left of that or to the west of that is inside of the city and subject to city response for both rescue, fire, and the police. To the right of that, as you go east out towards Stanford, you're out into the county. And so it provides clear response and who is responsible for that emergency response in that area.
And in that regard, it's very similar to what we did along 2168 several years ago at a couple of intersections at the roundabout, and then closer to Lexington Road, where the boundary just didn't make sense, and so depending upon, literally, within several hundred feet of one another, depending where a wreck occurred, who responded, which created confusion, obviously. And I should also note that, to your point, Commissioner Cottle, every resident was personally contacted by the city manager prior to the first reading of the intent annex ordinance, and also, a vast majority of them consented to it.
That's correct, with the exception of one resident, which we were simply unable to contact after multiple attempts.
So you don't foresee any opposition to this?
I think the city manager's meetings were positive on all accounts, but, you know, by virtue of there being eight different tracks in this property and not being able to contact one, the city didn't meet any resistance, but the one landowner could object, we just simply don't know.
Okay. Anything further?
We do need a motion, Mayor.
We do?
We do.
And I'll entertain one.
I move for approval of second reading of ordinance 1927.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Saris?
Yes.
The next item is ordinance number 1928. This will be the first reading. Mr. Dexter, I think we went over this last time, but.
We did. You accepted the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to change the .362 acres on Fox Harbor Drive there, from the GRB, General Residential Small Lot, to HC Highway Commercial, as it adjoins some pre-existing storage units, and this was the Old Beauty School lot that was in discussion. So this is the ordinance that formalizes the recommendation you accepted from the planning commission at your last meeting. Again, this is a first reading.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to accept the first reading of ordinance number 1928.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Discussion?
If my memory serves right, and maybe Mr. Hunter can jump in on this, though, this is just kind of cleaning up, I think, is what I heard last time. There's probably business going on there in the wrong classification.
The prior use was under a conditional use permit, which had expired based upon the fact that it wasn't in continuous. There wasn't continuous business activity for the conditional use, which means they expire over a certain period of time, so in order for the property to sell and still have a commercial use, it would be necessary to have this changed.
Do you need to read this?
Not on the first reading, I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
No other comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Saris?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have need for an executive session?
Yes, sir, we do, for personnel matters.
And I have a pending litigation matter, if I do, please, thank you.
Mr. Cottle, if you'll do the honors, please.
I move that we go into executive session. You don't want to, you want to know why? We're going to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61811F. And we're also going to go in there, believe it or not, we're going to discuss pending litigation for which disclosure of our details might compromise our litigation posture, which we do not want to do, and that's per KRS 6181C.
Thank you, sir. We have that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We are in executive session.
I move that we go back into regular session.
Second.
Asked for the vote. Mayor Proten. Asked for the vote.
All was in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Mayor, you can vote now.
We just came back into regular session.
Most amazing, is a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. If there's no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Most amazing, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.
See you soon.